Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the September 1 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Happy September. Board Clerk.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. The Board of County Commissioners, Washington County, also serving as the governing body of Clean Water Services and all other county special districts, is now meeting in regular session September 1, 2020. Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
I will mention Commissioner Trice's excused. Vice Chair Scoughton.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. Thank you. The first item on our agenda today is oral communications. I just want to note that the Board constituent communication report this week included 14 different emails. As always, thank you to our staff from different departments in helping us respond to these requests, in addition to phone calls, so that our constituents get the most accurate and timely information possible. In summary, we had one communication on COVID-19, five on racial justice and police accountability, seven related to assessment and taxation, a part of that is a response on ballot collection boxes, as many of our boxes have been removed from the curb in order to go through maintenance. They will be returning, and if you're interested in more information, you can check out our website or Facebook page. But also, we're having a work session with our elections folks on September 8. And then, one more item with regard to the November ballot. So, Mr. Board Clerk, do we have anyone signed up today?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, that's it for the first portion of oral communication for our agenda today. The next item is our consent agenda. We did have a few changes to our agenda for today, changes since the first publication of our agenda. So, one of our items was, that had been originally on the consent agenda, has been carried forward to our action subsection, so Item 7B, approve the Metro Affordable Housing Bond concept endorsement. We'll be getting a presentation on that. On the consent agenda, Item F is an added item. The prior Item F moved, as I mentioned, and Item H was added. So, that leaves us with the consent agenda with nine items, one set of minutes, one item under Clean Water Services, three items under Land Use and Transportation, two items under Health and Human Services, and two items under Support Services. What are the wishes of the Board?
For approval of the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Make sure I get the numbers straight today with Commissioner Trice excused. The next item on our agenda is presentations, and here we are for a COVID-19 update. Welcome back from a well-deserved vacation, Marnie Kyle, our Director of Health and Human Services. Your team did great last week. You know you have a great, rock-solid team already, but they, don't worry, they stepped up to the plate last week.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board. I am very fortunate to have a really talented, fabulous team to step in so that I can go and enjoy time. I especially loved being with my three-year-old granddaughter. Lots of fun. They're fun to be around. So, an update for you today, and I'm just going to warn you, it's a little bit longer than normal, but I'm going to try to get through it. But I really thought it was important that we acknowledge that we've been responding to COVID for six months. We're at the six-months mark. So, we can go to the next slide. In Washington County, it's, as you know, it's been a really long and winding road. Through it all, we've had public health and county heroes standing strong and stepping up. I continue to be really proud, and I know that you are, of the amazing work that they've done. Many times, our team here in Washington County was tasked with being first. First to identify equity issues, as we noticed the disproportionate impact to our Latinx community being hit so hard. Helping to figure out how do we do testing for outbreaks in long-term care facilities? How do we plan to protect our seasonal and migrant agricultural workers? First to develop a lot of the education for supporting businesses. The list just goes on and on. And during this time, all of our normal county operations, our public health programs and HHS, mental health programs, all had to continue as well. So, we can go to the next slide. So, this presentation was actually put together by the Public Health Response Team, Amy Manchester-Harris. So, I just thought it was really a great sort of acknowledgement of the first six months. So, you probably all remember, I know I remember, February 28, 2020, the first presumptive case of COVID-19 in the state of Oregon was reported in Washington County. Just two days later, March 1, Oregon Health Authority announced the second presumptive case of COVID-19 in Oregon, which was also a Washington County case. Three days later, March 4, the Board of Commissioners adopted an emergency declaration. I think we had barely landed, several of us from our trip to the NACO conference in Washington, DC, landed and showed up early the next morning to declare this emergency. Just a week after that first case, March 7, OHA announces four new presumptive cases, one more in Washington County, and some in Jackson and Kalamath. The next day, March 8, the Governor first declared a state of an emergency, and the state agencies issued guidance for Oregon schools and universities. Oregon added seven new presumptive cases, bringing the COVID count to 14. Five of those 14 were in Washington County. Two weeks after the first case, March 12, Governor issues the first social distancing measures, statewide closures of K through 12 schools, and no gatherings of 250 or more. Schools closed for a year, a month later, on April 8. March 13, the President declared COVID-19 outbreak a national emergency. And then, five days later, March 17, the Governor closes all onsite consumption of food and drinks statewide. Almost three weeks later, there was a postponement of non-urgent healthcare procedures in order to conserve personal protective equipment and hospital beds for the state's COVID-19 emergency response. And then, on March 23, we're all very familiar with stay home and save lives, the order that was issued by the Governor. Next slide. Oh, we can just flip through the pictures. So, these are some pictures of our EOC and public health staff, hard at work. Our first press conference, and you can see Dr. Christina Baumann there with one of our local superintendents. And I remember being at OHA at the EOC, the state EOC, and thinking, I wouldn't want to wish this outbreak on any school, but I sure was glad that Mike was the superintendent that we worked with, because he was so gracious, stepped right in, came down, I can't remember if it was a Saturday or Sunday, but spent the rest of the day with us, working through this.
Mike Scott?
Yes, Mike Scott, sorry.
Mike Scott, the superintendent from Hillsborough School District.
Yes, thank you. So, you'll also see pictures of us getting ready to do patient testing, delivering food for people who were in quarantine, setting up our EOC, and getting ready for this response. Okay, next slide. So, just a little bit more timeline. April 1, we opened the Respite Center, 114-room hotel room that we opened so that our homeless community would have a place to go if they were sick and needed to convalesce. April 14, Governor's press conference on reopening Oregon is where she described the phased approach to reopening and what the criteria were to meeting that. May 5, Washington County, first case released after being hospitalized since the end of February, and we all celebrated that day with him. And then, May 28, Washington County was approved to enter Phase 1, which we did on June 1. Next slide. So, a lot of change, a lot of political change, science change, and capacity change. I remember the early days, and every single time Tricia and I would say, okay, that's done, what more could happen? And then, a week later, more happened. And it's been pretty amazing. I know in public health, I've been in public health for over 30 years, and we've planned for pandemics, we've done tabletops on pandemics, and we, you know, tried to prepare for pandemics. And many of the things that happened during this pandemic, the school closures, for example, we planned those and tabletoped them, but never actually thought it would happen, couldn't imagine that we would really close schools for the rest of a school year. The other thing is the science changes. I don't know how many times I've had to come and tell you, oops, what I told you last week has changed, and the science has improved, and we have new information. And then, capacity. We started with a team of eight to 10 communicable disease staff, and now, as you know, with our surge capacity staff, we have over 154 staff working on this epidemic. So, lots of changes in how we worked, social distancing, including our EOC staff, who had to figure out, how do you run a pandemic response and maintain social distancing? How do we do that remotely, as all of our county had to learn really quickly? None of us had probably, many of us had not even opened teams until this hit, and then we had to become experts within a matter of hours. How we worked, next slide, how we worked with our community changed. We had to quickly work with our community to ensure that there was testing available, that they had the PPE that they needed to have, and that we could create things like the Safe Sleeping Village. That took partnerships with our entire community, and all those happened really quickly. Next slide. So, and I've hit this a little bit, you can click through the picture, I've hit this a little bit, but because Washington County had the first cases, we had to be first at so many things, including creating with the Oregon Health Authority, the investigative guidelines, the educational materials, websites. All of that was started and created oftentimes in Washington County by our staff. Next slide. First to develop, here's a list of some of them. We were the first to develop an employer guide and guidance for our agricultural workers, long before the statewide agricultural and seasonal farm worker guidance came out. First to create case investigation scripts and put the contact, contract in place with some of our community-based organizations. First to create robust strike teams to ensure that vulnerable populations were protected. So, we had long-term care, assisted living strike teams, school strike teams, and then agricultural and seasonal worker strike teams. First to call every long-term care facility in the county and provide consultation and infection control guidance. And first to develop, as I said, investigative guidelines and procedures that were shared with the other local health departments and state health partners. And then, finally, we funded community partners to help with the community engagement and provide wraparound services in Oregon. We developed partnerships with the Oregon Public Health Institute to employ our bilingual, bicultural contact tracers, and we've worked closely to build new partnerships with employers and facilities, including our own jail shelters, the Respite Center. I have a much stronger relationship even within the county with the Housing Department. It's been a great partnership, and I think it's really going to carry us through as we work on the metro bond together. So, just before I move back into our normal presentation and update, I just want to thank everyone, including each of you. You often said to me, we are going to rely on public health science and not politics to make our decision, and you've held strong with that. And I have confidence that as we move into the future and continue to address this pandemic, that you'll continue to support us in that way, and we'll continue to have great partnerships throughout the county, through our community, and a strong public health team that will keep carrying us through, forward. So, thank you for indulging me on that, just to give you a...
Actually, before you move on.
Sure.
Recognizing that we are six months into this pandemic and the associated economic crisis, I think it's, I want to make sure that Commissioners, if you'd like to make any comments, that you have an opportunity to, before we dive into things like the numbers that illustrate it's a continued journey, but it's a moment to celebrate.
No, I thought that was a great look back. It's pretty amazing, all the things that we have done on the fly, and just kept moving every day, show up for work, and it's a new thing. And I think you, particularly you and your department, your staff have done a great job of staying ahead of that. For us, at least for me, it's kind of a blur, what happened to spring and summer, and here we are now heading into fall, and pretty soon, it'll be 21, and we're still going to be saying, we've got our heads down, we don't even know what day of the week it is. So, yeah, that was a great snapshot, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I think we've all appreciated the work. I was just looking at your predictions here, where you said that this would be over in two weeks. By the end of the month, you'd have a vaccine, and that was five months ago. And so, you may want to, in your remaining comments after this, you may want to tell us about the prediction.
Don't trust my crystal ball.
No, it's great. We get tons of phone calls, I've given you lots of comments that weren't necessary, in fact, they weren't mine, but I appreciated you answering them honestly, and we just have to slug it through, I think, a few more months. I'm anticipating about February, before we start to lift our head up a whole bunch, but I hope I'm wrong.
Thank you for the summary of the report today.
Well, I remember early on this journey, Commissioner Scoughton shared a documentary video, or mentioned it, from Sky News, and I watched it soon thereafter, and it was about Italy, and a particular town in Italy that was just having a horrible, horrible time. And I really appreciated your sharing that with us very early in the experience. We were blessed from day one. We already knew from prior work together that we have a great Health and Human Services Department, a good emergency operations crew, and with that solid base, you all carried us forward, so that we knew that we were going into the unknown, but that we had a really rock-solid base to go through that together, to make science-based decisions, to look at, assess the evolving community needs that will continue to evolve. You and your team have been great to engage, for example, with school districts, to help our school districts face the unknown as they move forward as well. I'm very proud of each and every member of the Washington County team and the Clean Water Services team for doing this work and doing it selflessly. You have shown up, we have kept our county operations going. Everyone has been nimble in shifting their work to meet whatever the community needs are. So, hats off to the community and our public service employees as we go through this together. So, short of a standing ovation, you know, I'll do the silent standing ovation with the waving of hands. So, thank you very much, and thank you for giving us that look back and recognizing some of these milestones and all the different firsts, from first patient to first processes to first actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And onward ho we go together in the months and weeks ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for indulging the time. I thought it was important to acknowledge that six-month look back, and to say thank you to, I mean, every, every single department has contributed to this response through working with the EOC, and the public health team has been just rock-solid, so. And when I say every single department, I always forget, but I'm including Clean Water Services, so, forget they're not a department, but they're a sister organization to us, and we appreciated everything that they've done as well, stepped up. Okay, so we'll get back to today's update then, and start with our typical, just run through the numbers real quickly, just so that you have an update. Starting with the Oregon numbers, there are 1,558 confirmed and presumptive cases that were reported in the last week for a cumulative total of 26,713 statewide. The case rate statewide is 634 cases per 100,000, and we've had 459 deaths. The good news that you'll see on this slide is that we are seeing a downward trend in the number of new hospitalizations. Next slide. So, now we'll move down into our Washington County numbers, and again, for comparison, I've put the previous week's numbers and this week's numbers. So, we're up to a total number of cumulative confirmed cases, 3,684, and 116 presumptive cases. And presumptive case, just as a reminder to everyone, is somebody that has signs and symptoms of COVID-19, has been in direct contact with a case, with a confirmed case, and doesn't have a positive test. So, sometimes they'll be moved up into a case and taken off the presumptive numbers. You'll see total hospitalizations, 291, and total deaths was 45. And then, the bottom half of this chart is the current outbreaks, and you'll see long-term care, 15, congregate settings, two, workplace, 11, and school daycare camp-type settings as one. So, we've added a couple of new pieces, because at the six-month mark, I thought it might be helpful to have a little bit of a comparison of our county and our state to other states and counties. And so, I've added a couple of slides. So, the higher case rate is the redder it is. So, you can see, we didn't put case rate numbers for every single state, because it would get a little bit busy, but you can see the darker red is a higher case rate. Did include case rates for the western states, so you'll see Washington at 986 per 100,000, Oregon at 634. And for those of you that are really sharp and notice that number slightly just different than the previous slide, it's because of just timing difference, but it's only a couple of numbers different. And so, Oregon does rank one of the lowest of all the states in U.S. territories for case rate. Oregon has 10 COVID-19 deaths per 100,000, also one of the lowest in the states and territories. So, that's some good news from Oregon, and I really do credit that to our community and our ability to really follow the stay-home, save-lives. Most people are following physical distancing, most people are wearing their masks, so we have to say again, thank you to our community for being one of the lowest. The highest case rate is Louisiana at 3,188 per 100,000, just to give you a comparison, and the lowest is Vermont at 259 per 100,000. So, just sort of gives you a comparison of where we are. Next slide. So, this is where that number difference is, so we can just go, this is just another way to look at, it's the same thing, where the more red, the higher the per 100,000, so the higher the case rate. This is in Oregon, so you can see, again, that Washington County has one of the sort of moderate case rates within our state. Okay, next. So, this slide should look familiar. The only thing that I've, that we've done, and I have to say thank you to Tricia and Eva, because they really helped to prepare these slides each week, but what we've done is, because we're tied to the region, and because you've probably all noticed that our numbers are getting better and things look like they're improving, so I thought it would be a good time to start looking more regionally as we think about our readiness to move into Phase 2. So, you can see, everybody across the board is green on the percent of emergency room visits for COVID-like illness, and you saw on the previous slide that our hospitalizations are going down statewide and in Washington County and regionally. Trend, percent of tests that are positive in the last seven days, so they're all below 5%, which was a goal, but they show as red because it is an uptrend from the previous week. But I think it's good news that the percent positive test is below 5%, so we need to maintain that. The other is percent increase in new cases in the last seven days. We're all trending downward, which is a good sign. What's interesting about this chart, I think, is that we're all pretty similar. So, there was a lot of concern about being tied to Multnomah County, and you can look at the next column, which is the number of cases that can be traced to a previous case, and that should be below 30%. None of us are meeting that, but you can see that there's not a huge amount of difference between Multnomah and Washington County. And then, downward trend in hospitalizations, and then, everybody is doing pretty well on contact tracing. Multnomah County is struggling a bit with that, just because of their population size. So, we'll go to the next slide. Oregon school reopening criteria, just as a reminder, this is what our school reopening criteria is for all in-person learning. We need to have an incident rate of fewer than 10 per 100,000, and a test positivity rate below 5%. And then, there's criteria for transitioning to comprehensive distance learning, if we meet that mark, and we would have to go backwards, or when we actually, you know, it's a hard stop when it gets back to greater than 30 per 100,000. And one of the requests, we can go to the next slide, one of the requests we had is, how does this compare to other states? And so, we just reviewed, the Oregon requires county and state metrics be met that are based on case rate and test positivity. Neighboring states, California, Washington, base their metrics on incident rate or case rate, like we do, and percent positivity in the previous two to three weeks. So, it's very similar. Exceptions exist for the youngest learners and students with learning needs in most states like Oregon. And Oregon and California have some of the most restrictive plans. So, our case rate is lower than some of the other states before we allow back in-person counseling, and I have a lot more detailed data on different states, if you're interested in that. Okay, so, this is just to give you an idea, again, regionally, where are we with meeting those school reopening metrics? And remember, the case rate that we're trying to get to for reopening in-person school is 10 per 100,000. So, you can see that we're quite a ways away from that in all three of our counties, and that's true for most counties in the state, not all of them. And then, the test positivity, you've seen that just a couple of slides ago, is below 5%, so that's a good, a good metric. metric. We're headed in the right direction there. Okay. So, at this point, you might be thinking, we can go to the next slide. Wow, we're looking better. And we are. But I thought this was just a really helpful graphic to show you that, yes, we are trending down in our number of cases and number of new cases. But you can see that the first arrow there was ripe, right as we entered Phase One compared to where we are today. So it is down, but we're still up overall.
And we are about to head into another holiday weekend.
Yes.
Do you have anything to mention?
I do, and that's how I'm going to end. Yes. So just a couple of just quick updates on homeless. The next slide, please. You're all very aware of our homeless prevention program, COVID prevention program. We have the hotel voucher program, who's currently has 12 people enrolled. Our Safe Sleeping Village, remember, has capacity for 50 residents, and we have 45 that have participated to date. And of those 45, three have exited the program for whatever reason. And so we are really close to capacity in that program. And then we also have the family promise shelters in Beaverton and Toowallatin Valley, and we currently have 30 people enrolled. So we are looking, because we're so close to capacity in these programs, we are looking at, at new alternatives and starting to think about, are there different ways to use the respite shelter or more hotel vouchering? Okay, next slide. I'm getting there, I promise. I know it's a little long today. So enforcement, you've probably heard quite a bit about enforcement. Just as a reminder, our current process is complaint-driven with a strong, strong focus on education. When people are found to be out of compliance, the first thing that we do is provide education and information, and we do everything we can to help them get into compliance. Non-compliance can result, this is according to the state executive orders, the non-compliance can result in fines and is considered a criminal misdemeanor. And so we are exploring options about how do we effectively and consistently issue citations if we get to that place. So we're having conversations locally, and we're having conversations at the state level to try to understand what are other counties doing and what are the options. And I think that we'll be bringing more discussion to your board in the next week or so. And I think that we talked about this a little bit a couple of weeks ago, but the governor is really encouraging local governments to increase enforcement on businesses, especially if they're not complying with the phased opening and face covering requirements. So we're just trying to figure out how we, how we do that in a way that supports our businesses, protects people from, and protects people from disease.
If I might ask on that, the way that I've internalized it is better for us to follow through as individuals visiting businesses and as businesses of operation than for us to all have to shut down or to continue to delay even further in-classroom learning for our students.
Yep, yeah.
It's the, we're up to, we have a total of 50 vouchers, did you say, on the hotel side?
Um.
How many vouchers do we have available?
So, the hotel voucher program, I don't know that we have a, a limit to the number of vouchers. We're not getting close to that. We really were.
Okay, and the 50, that was on the safe, I know.
Safe Sleeping Village is 50, right.
And we're up to 45 at the moment?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. And, and how, how is the hotel voucher program being funded? And you say you're not sure about whether we have resource limitations with respect to those vouchers?
No, no, we, so this whole homeless prevention program, the, the three different strategies are all funded through the CARES funding. And we're not running into funding capacity issues. It's just a matter of if we're out of room for the Safe Sleeping Village, can we, i- is it better to use the respite center, the Comfort Inn and Suites in a different way? Or do we want to increase the number of people that we're just putting up into different hotels, or working more with family promise shelters, and what's their capacity to take on? So we're just exploring the different options. It's not a, for, for once, we don't say this very often in Health and Human Services or Housing, but for once, the limitation isn't the funding at, at this point. The limitation is, we just have to figure out what's the most effective way that supports the needs of the community we're trying to serve.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so, we can, so the other thing, I, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that effective Thursday, August 27th, the EOC was demobilized. And the, the staff at the EOC, the John Wheeler and our incident commanders and finance, really have transitioned to what we're calling a COVID response team. That includes emergency management staff, housing staff, and HHS staff. So we're not ending the response to the pandemic in any way. In fact, many of us are working harder than ever under this new structure. But we need the EOC to be operating at full capacity the way that they've been doing. So the, the first response team will continue to be activated, and they're continuing to meet weekly just to, to make sure that they maintain situational awareness and provide briefing. They're still receiving and distributing the PPE and other resources. And Health and Human Services is really now managing the COVID response, really the public health staff are the bulk of that response. And then Housing Services is managing the homeless strategies, including the Safe Sleeping Village. I, I want to make sure that you know the operations section has transferred to the public health response team. Josh Kreitz is leading the housing homeless response team. The logistics section and planning section functions transitioned to emergency management. So that means the personal protective equipment and the community infection control, information, ordering, processing, all of that will carry on through emergency management. So, any questions about that?
No, I just want to thank every single individual who has been working intensely, both for the months leading up to activating the EOC. Because I remember you're talking with us in January and February about what this could possibly be, and going through scenario planning. And then boom, it was here. You've all done a tremendous job. Thank you.
Yep, yep. So, next slide, please. Community-based organizations, we've been talking about the partnerships. Washington County Public Health currently has contracts with 10 community-based organizations. And I would say this really doesn't show the full picture because I, Oregon Health Authority has also contracted with over, I want to say 50, 50, community-based organizations, which means that we also have memorandums of understanding with those 50 community-based organizations to help coordinate and align all of this education, outreach, and response, and assistance for families in isolation and quarantine. So it's a, a really huge piece. They're currently supporting 570 families in isolation and 405 additional people in quarantine. So, continues to grow. And then, just a really quick update on, next slide, school-age learning support. You talked a lot about that. Thank you, Tricia, last week while I was gone. And so just a really quick update, but we'll be giving you a more thorough update next week. So we have increased the contract with MESSO to support the current childcare capacity. So that has moved forward. Evan has met with all the school districts to align childcare and learning support plans and formulate grant allocations. And so we will be bringing you some work next week on this. Just want you to know it's moving forward. Okay, so here's, I think, so, stay safe and prevent a holiday uptick. Oregon did see statewide increases after Memorial Day and 4th of July. And you can see those 49% increase after the 4th of July, Washington County saw a 49% increase in COVID tests performed, 32% increase in cases, and 96% increase in hospitalizations. So, we don't want to see that again. So, next slide. So, just asking everybody to think about, how can we have a safe Labor Day weekend? So some things for folks to consider, maybe a virtual gathering, maybe the entire gathering outdoors and while also maintaining six-foot distance. If you're outdoors, to add fans so that there's air circulation. Wear, wear a mask whenever you go inside, and plan ahead and really talk to your, your friends about wearing a mask and how you're going to serve food so that you're not contaminating. But we, we're just, you know, to remember, many of our cases, 50% didn't know that they were sick and they were spreading COVID without any symptoms. So, we really want everybody to have a safe, enjoyable Labor Day, but think about how to do that with your family and friends safely. And that is what I have for you today. Any other?
Commissioners, any questions?
A couple of quick things. That was an extensive report. Thank you for adding the other states. We talked, I asked about that last week, and I appreciate it. One other little piece of information, though, is, that's the criteria. That's what I'm being asked about, is if we use a 5% for instance, rate, what are they using? Because I, I've always wondered whether those colors on the map are really comparing apples to apples. So if I'm in a state that uses an 8% or 9% as acceptable, I might have a low incidence if I'm below that. And we may use a 5, and we might be above it because we're 5.2 or something. Anyway, do that. And then hopefully this board.
I have more information that I can share with the full board, and I'll, yeah, I'll send that to you all.
It's interesting. And the second thing is, one of the most challenging things that we can ever get into is in the enforcement. So I'm hoping we're going to have a robust, I mean, people who are mad at their employers may file false claims. There'll be arguments as to what they did and didn't do. And so this thing is fraught with legal issues. And so I, I think we need to really vet that very carefully before we decide to be enforcing. And what does enforcement look like?
Yes.
And how many suits do we want to take on if somebody makes a false claim and we have to deal with that? Or if somebody is shut down because there's more than one incident, and they said, you've just impaired my earnings? We'll be using Alan up here a lot to, and his staff, if we don't carefully, carefully watch that one.
Yep.
Yeah, I, referring back to, I think, Slide 22, and we, you showed the graph of June to now and the spikes and all of that, realizing that was all summer vacation stuff. I'd like to think that we're going to see a continuing trend downward because we are going back to school. So there's not as much vacation. We're virtual schools rather than in, presently in attendance. I just, I'd like to think that's going to continue to go down. Is that what we're thinking, or is it going to get back up again?
I, I like your optimism. I think that, you know, what's, the, probably the most important message is that we can continue to bring these numbers down if we do things that are very simple, like wearing our mask, maintaining the physical distancing, washing our hands, cleaning surfaces. You know, when people gather, I mean, we're certainly worried because you have Labor Day, and then you have Halloween, and you have Thanksgiving, and those are like typical times that people gather. And we continue to see outbreaks where there's multiple households gathering. And so we're just really asking people to think about how, how we can keep those gatherings as safe as possible, keeping them small, keeping them outside now while the weather is still beautiful. But anytime that we're indoors, wearing a mask, maintaining that physical distance. I think that's the, the million-dollar question, is what's going to happen with the numbers. We've also brought up here that we're very concerned about influenza season starting and how important it is for everybody to get their influenza vaccination. For a couple of reasons. One, it helps differentiate what, what the potential diagnosis is based on symptoms. Doesn't completely, but it helps. And the, the other is COVID or influenza are really nasty viruses that can make people really sick and kill people on their own. We certainly don't want to combine them and have somebody with two.
Commissioner Scouton, anything?
No, I, I just a sort of anecdotal comment at this point. I'm not trying to be a shield for the Safeway company, but I hope that others are also offering great opportunities for people. But currently, Sheri and I got the senior dose of the flu shot. And while that wasn't our principal motivation, our principal motivation is obviously to be safe. We do appreciate that we'll be able to take 10% off of our groceries up to $200 sometime between now and end of October. So, look for opportunities and coupon offerings to kind of motivate you to get those flu shots. And I must say that they're, it's pretty painless. I mean, so, it's really important that we get those flu shots. And for those of us, I guess, beyond a certain age, 60 or 65, we should be getting a senior dose as well. I'm glad to have gotten that out of the way. We should all be doing that. And it's great to be looking at other states, but frankly, you know, the U.S. is, we're doing so badly compared to the rest of the decolleged world that it's kind of hard to really take much solace from the fact that we're doing relatively well when, as a country, we're, we're doing so abisomally bad. And we're still a long ways from getting numbers down to where we really have control of this. And other states are doing so much worse. And with travel and other things, we could easily be back in a place that's bad. So, it's, it's hard. Personally, I'm, I'm naturally an optimist, but I'm, it's hard to be optimistic, frankly. And we've got holidays coming up. We really got to take this seriously. Need to stick with this. It's really a challenge. And it's unfortunate, it has become politicized, it shouldn't have been, it has become. Common sense would tell us that we should be wearing face masks. I mean, it's just, that's just, that's just the science. Unfortunately, it's become politicized. It's really unfortunate and misguided, completely misguided. So we'll see what happens in the coming, in the coming months. But I think it's, I think we, take a look at some of the numbers. Mentioned Italy, other parts of Europe and Eastern Asia, those numbers are so much better than ours. And why we as a country can do better, it's a shame and all of us really, an embarrassment.
Thanks for getting your flu shot. And if any of you, as you get them, put it on your Facebook page.
Don't, don't go away. I would ask for audience participation at this point. And I need a little assistance from one of you to come up here and take pictures. I'd like to have queued up first Slide 1, then Slide 28, and then Slide 29. And if Philip was here, I'd have him take photos. But Kevin, if you could do that, and let's all face this way, down by this monitor. Could you take them up here? So we'll have, we'll have these for our county social media to mark the occasion of the six months as well as for Labor Day weekend preparations. Thank you, everyone. Come on, you're the least, please. Getting, getting folks, I'm going to be kneeling down against this monitor, but having folks with their masks all here as part of the picture will be great. but having folks with their masks all here as part of the picture will be great. Down here to this monitor. I am on my knees. If anybody wants to join, you're welcome to. Come on in tight so he can get the picture. It's going to be lasting 15 minutes.
You're a tall people.
You're welcome.
Do Kevin?
All right, Kevin.
One, two, three.
Okay, Q 28, please.
How many of you are smiling with your mask on?
Oh, please.
They're bigger than you can imagine.
There we go.
Are you in these?
Okay.
But I don't, but I don't like the idea of being packed that closely.
There we go. Oh, no, no, sorry. There were two slides. There we go. Hey, I'll get those controls. Thank you. Doing anything to keep our numbers down. Does it work? Yep. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that so that we can continue our social media campaign so that everyone is safe. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation to proclaim Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. So our board clerk's going to read the proclamation. Then we're going to have some guests provide us with a staff report and then we'll vote on the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners for Washington County Suicide Prevention Month, September 2020. Whereas in 2019, 88 people died by suicide in Washington County. And whereas Washington County veterans have a suicide rate two to three times that of the total population. And whereas 56% of those that died by suicide in Washington County had a current diagnosed mental health condition. And whereas suicide is preventable, talking about suicide reduces the risk of occurrence and help and resources are available in Washington County. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Council of Washington County was formed in 2013 and is a collaboration among mental health providers, first responders, hospitals, educators, the faith community, law enforcement, government organizations, and survivors of suicide loss. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Council has adopted the vision of zero is possible, indicating the council's goal of having no deaths by suicide in Washington County. And whereas public health joins our Human Services Division and other county departments to create suicide safer community by reducing the stigma associated with suicide, advocating for access to behavioral health care, training both professionals and non-professionals in evidence-based suicide prevention curriculums, providing technical assistance to external agencies such as schools and behavioral health agencies, and implementing the environmental strategies by reducing lethal means. And now therefore, it be resolved that on the first day of September 2020, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, acting as the Board of Health, does hereby proclaim the month of September as Suicide Prevention Month of Washington County. Signed this day by Chair Catherine Harrington and Recording Secretary.
Good morning, Chair Harrington Commissioners. Thank you. Tricia Mortel, Washington County Public Health Manager. We're here today to thank you for the proclamation of Suicide Prevention Month. We shared with you last year the great strides we had made to drastically reduce suicide rates in Washington County as we've sadly experienced one of the highest rates in the state in the past. COVID shifted some of the work in our prog, and our progress across county and community partners, but it heightened our concern and awareness about mental health issues facing many in our community today. Just yesterday, the contact tracing team supervisor shared a story where a community individual who had tested positive and was in isolation and quarantine, shared her suicide plan with our caller. The individual had no food, was behind on all their bills and rent, and felt hopeless. Luckily, we had provided training to all of our contact tracers and she knew what to do. She was able to get the individual immediate help and prevent the loss of a Washington County resident. And I want to note, as it's not in our presentation, just today, there was an announcement of a new Suicide Prevention Wellness Partnership between Lines for Life, the Oregon Department of Education, and Oregon Health Authority. It was established because of Oregon legislation called Addie's Act. This call to action and support for our schools was in recognition of the loss of a young transgender youth, Addie Saab. So I have colleagues here today who will share with you the ways we are continuing to prevent suicide rates from climbing and the innovations we're putting in place due to COVID. First, let me acknowledge our new Suicide Prevention Coordinator, Jenna O., who's in the audience. Jenna is one of the brave souls who's decided to join Washington County during this COVID time. So thank you, Jenna, for becoming a new Washington County resident, employee. We also have two presenters. Rich Roll will be on video. Rich is the Program Coordinator for Washington County Crisis Team at Hawthorne Walkin Center with Life Works Northwest. And Jason Me, it's not Vicki, this is Jason. Jason is a Veterans Service Officer and a part of the Veterans Mental Health First Aid Team. As practitioners, as veterans and parents who have been impacted by these deaths of despair, we thank you for your continued support for this important work. And I'll turn it over to Rich. I think he's on video. And next slide. Are we able to get Rich?
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you, Rich.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, it is a privilege to speak to you today about our efforts to make Washington County a safer community through greater awareness of suicide and more effective intervention with those at risk. As the Program Supervisor for the Washington County Crisis Team, it's my responsibility and great pleasure to manage the daily operations of the Hawthorne Walkin Center as well as our county's 24-hour mobile crisis response so that our adults and children always have someone to turn to for support, day or night. And I want to say throughout the pandemic, our dedicated staff have continued working 24/7 to help those in mental health and addictions-related crises in our county. On behalf of our team and our agency, Life Works Northwest, our clients and their families and loved ones, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your ongoing support of our services. So as we look at some of the most recent suicide data, there's no question we need everyone's help. As a nation, our numbers are rising. At least 15% of Americans or 1 out of 6 people have thought about suicide at some point in their life. And we know that about 4% of individuals have thought of suicide in just the past year. And that translates to more than 20,000 people in our county, more than 13 million nationwide. And that number jumps to 17% when counting the portion of youth who have considered suicide in the past 12 months. And we know of those thinking of suicide, 1 in 4 will make a plan. And once that plan is made, about half will make an attempt. Sorry, let me just get the. Closer to home, we see the impact of suicide in Oregon. With the loss of 898 Oregonians in one year, suicide is currently the eighth-leading cause of death statewide. We have the 17th highest suicide rate in the nation and the 17th highest rate of youth suicide. Suicide in our state has been on a steady increase since 2008. The current rate is 19 suicides per 100,000 residents, which is 36% greater than the national rate of 14. Clearly, Oregon has a serious problem with suicide that is not getting better. We lose one person in our state to suicide every 10 hours. And tragically, as you see on the slide, suicide is Oregon's top cause of death for our teens and young adults aged 15 to 24. And of those who died by suicide in Oregon, you'll notice that 88 were in Washington County. And I want to note that the picture of suicide is different here in our county than it is for the state overall. And we'll be talking more about that shortly. Next slide, please. Washington County Public Health collects data on the circumstances leading up to suicides. And that information indicates that in our county, an estimated 3/4 of people who die by suicide frequently had depressed mood. 72% experienced a recent crisis. And more than 50% had a history of suicidal thoughts. Other circumstances found to be related to a higher risk of suicide include problems with physical health, with relationships, in employment, legal issues, finances, and housing, including eviction. Next slide, please. In addition to those factors, there is a common thread among deaths by suicide that crosses a wide range of individuals. That includes isolation, difficulty accessing health care, trauma history, and ready access to lethal means, including firearms. Next slide. To no one's surprise, the impact of COVID-19 on mental health has been profound. The pandemic has brought a host of intense new stressors, while at the same time removing many of the resources people have traditionally used to cope, such as social support. We know all too well, millions across our country have lost their jobs and some of their businesses and/or their homes. Families quarantined together under stay-at-home orders are chafing under stress, which may increase the risk of intimate partner violence and child abuse. Disrupted routines and the pervasive anxiety of contracting a life-threatening disease can worsen existing conditions such as mental illness or substance use disorders. Moreover, people in crisis may avoid hospitals and treatment centers due to concerns about reduced capacity and/or fear of contracting the virus. All at the same time, gun sales are up. The result could be a perfect storm when it comes to the risk of suicide, as Mark Rieger, the Chief of Psychology Services at the VA Puget Sound Healthcare System in Seattle, has said recently. In fact, in April, when more than 20 million people had lost their jobs due to COVID-19, text messages to the Federal Disaster Distress Hotline spiked over 900%. And in a national survey conducted in June, findings among the respondents showed three times the prevalence of anxiety symptoms, four times for depression, and 1/4 of those surveyed reporting symptoms of stress and even trauma related directly to the pandemic. And the number of people struggling with suicidal thoughts occurred at twice the rate when compared to before the pandemic. This is the reason we're watching our suicide rates for Washington County very closely. And so far, we have not seen a rise in suicide. For the months since COVID-19 began, the rate of suicide in Washington County has actually been about the same as last year or even trending a little lower based on the preliminary data. We will continue to watch our rates closely and respond proactively to the needs in our community. And at the heart of this response, as you see on the slide, is the COVID-19 Community Counseling Program created by Washington County in partnership with Life Works Northwest, Western Psychological, Asian Health and Service Center, and Lutheran Community Services. This program provides support to Washington County community members who need professional help related to the very personal impact of the pandemic. The core services include supportive counseling with an emphasis on coping skills, resilience, and developing solutions to resolve losses and overcome difficulties. Referals to longer-term behavioral health care are coordinated as needed. Best of all, participation in the program is free of charge and culturally-specific service delivery is available. We've also created a resource page called Mental Health Matters that lists resources for anxiety, grief support, abuse and neglect, domestic violence, and substance abuse. And when COVID-19 began, it impacted our community education and training programs that prepare participants to be able to support those in mental health crisis. Majority of these trainings were initially put on hold because they're traditionally held in person. Knowing how much these were needed, now more than ever, Washington County worked with Multnomah and Clactomus Counties to provide the trainings virtually. As a result, we were able to train nearly 200 individuals in Washington County on how to intervene with someone having suicidal thoughts. We're also adding 14 new trainers in the next couple of months and building capacity to train in Spanish as well. Next slide, please. Another powerful intervention in our community includes the planned suicide prevention barrier for the Hillsborough parking structure. It's being accepted to implement restricted access to the top levels, which are too frequently a destination for those in our community intending to suicide. Research has shown again and again that this is an incredibly effective way to restrict means and literally save lives as most individuals will not go to another location if the one they had in mind is made safe. We're deeply grateful to Washington County and the Board of Commissioners for their support of this project. Next slide, please. I'll finish speaking about the impact of suicide by turning our attention to those most at risk. Though absolutely any one of us can experience suicidal thinking, there are particular groups at elevated risk resulting in more deaths for their members. As you can see from this list, active-duty military and veterans are particularly high-risk groups, both with suicide frequency above the national average. In fact, as we heard before, suicide among veterans is nearly four times the rate of the general population. And closer to home in Washington County, 15 of those 88 suicide deaths were veterans. Other high-risk groups include LBGTQ youth ages 24 or younger, older white males with their risk increasing with each year of age, persons with mental health diagnoses including substance use disorders, those who live in rural areas, and those working in the construction trades. And some of the strongest commonalities include gender. While women are three times more likely to make an attempt, men are 3 and 1/2 times more likely to die by suicide. And again, having less access to health care and higher access to lethal means increases the risk substantially. I'll now turn it over to Jason to speak more about our efforts with some of these high-risk populations.
Thank you. Once again, before I move on, I want to thank, thank you for allowing me to come and speak today. As a veteran, retired veteran who deals with PTSD, I want to just share a quick story. 2010, we actually came back from deploying to Iraq with the Oregon Army National Guard. I, at that point in time, as a veteran, like most veterans, did not have anything to do with or want to deal with anything dealing with the word mental health, depression, or suicide. During that period of time, luckily, I was ordered, told, to go into a program to help teach others in our community about resiliency. And I've learned since then that we are quite the resilient group of individuals as veterans, but also Washington County has been very resilient. This resiliency training actually led me to learn, or led me to learn, to actually say the word suicide, to ask somebody about suicide, to understand what suicide really is. This personally was something that I'm glad that I was actually brought in front of other people, other experts in my field, to actually talk to me individually about this. Without this rapid and quick choice to actually join this group and a little bit urging by my wife, this actually saved my life. It was the first time that I was asked about my own suicidal thoughts. As a military member, we've been trained to suck that up, move on. Life will happen. We know how to adapt and overcome, be better people. I think it's time for our society, and since 2010, I believe all the efforts that we've done here at Washington County within our military, within the state, we have now addressed that. And we've seen these numbers improve because we are not scared anymore to actually ask these questions about suicide. Just a few months ago, about six months ago, we know about the COVID numbers. I got the opportunity to move from my veteran job as an outreach coordinator, as a mental health provider or mental health first aid trainer and provider, to speak and help with answering those calls, making those calls, talking to every one of our COVID positive cases and their families. This is a brand-new world that we're in. And these calls are very touching, just like the one that Tricia spoke about earlier today. These, this is a time of isolation and this is one of the key things that affects the suicide, these numbers. It's real easy for us to hide behind the cameras these days, the phones, all those things we never thought about. But now we're actually in physical isolation. And I just encourage everybody to step out of their shell and ask that question about suicide. Practice. suicide practice. One of my greatest cohorts that I got to work with, Nancy Griffith, she actually used to always tell us, before we started the day, "We gotta be flexible like yoga." Yoga includes body, mind, and spirit. We all love to talk about the body part, right? Exercise, push-ups. We did 22 a day in the veteran community. Now it's time to talk about that individual mental side, the spirit, right? And the mind. It's okay to have those thoughts, but it's not okay not to ask about them and talk about them. Thank you. In the veteran community, at Dave's Disability and Veteran Services, we actually have moved a lot of our phone, our appointments to phone and virtual appointments. And we also have allowed some expectations or some exceptions for any of our veterans that are not able to use that technology. We are still here for you. Currently, the VA offers both video and phone appointments. Some of those appointments are also allowed in person. Just recently, I got off the phone with the VA about their telehealth. They are actually talking about and talking to their providers about how we actually physically do a virtual teleappointment. It's not just looking at the computer screen because it's over here and we got a camera over here, it's actually acknowledging the person on the other end of that camera, which is awesome. Great change. Some resources that we can help provide during the COVID pandemic that we refer to veterans are such sites as maketheconnection.net, which connects our veterans to a lot of different services that are out there. We also have the Psych Armor Save, which is designed to identify when veterans may be at risk for suicide and explain what we can do in response to that and deal with those concerns. And then also the Vet Center, which we have in the community that serves directly, that has kind of that ambiguity or disconnect from the VA itself, which there's a fear of the VA, there's a fear of a lot of those things. Next slide, please. So how are we developing ways within Dave's itself? Myself and another Veteran Service Officer, who is not here today, we actually have been trained in mental health first aid, and we're providing training throughout the veteran community to help encourage those and empower those veterans to use those skill sets that they had in the war zone to actually helping those in their community here. We're also working to host virtual classes online during the COVID, but also to move forward with in-person classes if possible. We also have myself and another Veteran Service Officer that have been recently trained as wisdom warriors, where we're able to apply QPR training, all of our other assist training, all of our mental health training, to all of the communities of our Washington County, to include those of the tribal community itself. Next slide, please. Older Adult Behavioral Health Initiative. Older adults, especially at this point in time, have a higher risk of suicide than other older adults. They are isolated, and they're stuck to use technology that they're not used to. And this is definitely an area that we have to bridge that gap. We still have to provide that personal service. In 2019, 2020, Washington County's two older adult behavioral health specialists, which we've hired and brought on, have provided consultations on complex cases of older adults with behavioral health needs. They've also delivered monthly community trainings in the older adult mental health first aid and QPR. And they have launched Project Visibility, which is a LGBTQ-plus training for all of our senior centers and aging network professionals. Our society and our views and our understanding of our community are changing, and we are addressing those. This is definitely a new area for that population. Also, we're establishing the Aging and Connect Community Health Improvement Plan Committee to reduce loneliness and isolation in Washington County with older adults, expanding community resources, and increasing community awareness of the impact of loneliness on health. With that said, I would say and suggest that we go back to the old technology of paper and pen and reach out to our older community, send letters. Those are probably the most personal thing that we can do without us actually being there. Thank you.
Next slide. And I just saw in an update somewhere that the library is doing Pen Pals for that very reason with older adults. So our partners in city and libraries are doing lots of important work for mental health support. So are you doing this one, Rich? I think you are.
I am. Jason, thank you. This is probably a good point to just say candidly, this is hard work for all of us to do, and any life lost to suicide is simply tragic. And sometimes with news of yet another death, we begin to lose hope or feel like our efforts are not working. But I want to draw your attention to this slide. As well, suicide rates in the U.S. and Oregon have generally risen in the last eight years. The rate in Washington County, noted and read on this chart, has dropped 47% since we collectively came together in 2012 to do something about suicide as a community. And it's not doing just one thing, it's many things at the same time, like reducing stigma, inviting people with lived experience to the table, whether that be gun owners, people who themselves have survived suicide attempts, or those who have lost loved ones to suicide. And as Jason mentioned, it's training, not just professionals, but perhaps even more importantly, non-professionals. After all, we know the majority of people thinking about suicide are much more likely to tell a family member or a friend rather than a professional. It's staying up to date on the research and adhering to national recommendations. It's challenging the stigma associated with behavioral health conditions and ensuring that all people have access to healthcare. Washington County believes that suicide prevention is everyone's job, and that means collaborating with our larger community partners, such as schools and clergy, businesses and social services, government leaders, survivors, researchers, families, advocates, veterans, to name a few. It is this coming together as a community which has been crucial in helping to lower the rate of suicide in Washington County. Next slide, please. I'm going to say I'm especially proud to highlight the work of my own agency, LifeWorks Northwest. It was the first behavioral health agency in our region to adopt the zero-suicide model. Since 2015, we've joined with Washington County Public Health, our agency's executive leadership team, clinical supervisors and staff, as well as those employees with lived experience around suicide, to work toward a suicide-free system of care. As a result, no matter their role, every employee now receives training in suicide intervention. No matter what brings them to us, every client is screened for suicide at every contact. No matter what the circumstance, every client will receive immediate support if they are thinking of suicide. And no matter which staff opens their clinical chart, our electronic health record is being redesigned to put the suicide prevention plan front and center, so no one at risk is missed, because everyone matters. Next slide. And Tricia, I didn't know if you wanted to do this one or if you wanted me to, and this was our last slide.
You go for it, Rich.
Well, I'm happy to say Washington County is leading the way to a community free of suicide, whether it's training professionals and non-professionals to be there for that person in need, providing schools with support and consultation to keep our youth safe and successful, helping our community agencies to implement the Zero Suicide Initiative, because zero is possible, or facilitating the Suicide Prevention Council and the Suicide Fatality Review Board. You're going to always see us leaning forward into the vision of a community in which we do not lose another person to suicide. For this to be a reality, we need everyone to be part of the solution. You can help. Consider joining the Bimonthly Suicide Prevention Council, or go to the gettrainedtohelp.com website to learn skills that could save a life. Or even, I'm asking this seriously, just put the suicide prevention numbers on this slide into your phone and encourage others to do the same. You can help us raise awareness and bring trainings to everyone by promoting them in the community you belong to, such as schools, workplaces, or places of worship. If you'd like to learn more about these resources or get involved in the council, please contact the county's suicide prevention coordinator, whose information is hyperlinked on this slide. And I want to thank you, the Board of Commissioners, for your time today and for the proclamation, raising awareness of suicide every September, and most of all, for your support, which gives us an opportunity to save a life every day of the year. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
We're actually seeing some real results. Thank you for that. All about evidence-based ultimately, isn't it? Practices, so that's encouraging. Thank you.
Yeah, going back to your slide, it looked like we have reduced our suicides since 2012, if I remember that slide. I can remember that one right there, yeah. Is that when we started to really focus, I guess, in this kind of work? And so this has basically been the results of what we've been trying to do. So that's a very cool statistic. Thank you.
So before we entertain a motion and adopt this proclamation, I want to thank you, Tricia and Jason, as well as for you, Rich Roll of LifeWorks Northwest and the Hawthorne Walk-In Center, for the work that you do each and every day. You never know when you're going to save a life, even a simple hello can do that. You mentioned the word "resiliency." There's always hope. There are resources to help each and every one of us be resilient. I know this because I too live with mental health, with depression. I have, at times in my life, contemplated suicide, so I can really identify with that feeling of hopelessness. And just Sunday night, I was dealing with a family crisis along these lines when Governor Brown called me. And it's kind of a strange thing to ask your governor if you can call her back in 20 minutes, but she was very understanding, so thank you again for the work that you do. And with that, commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt this proclamation to recognize suicide prevention month of September 2020?
Shall we vote?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously for to zero.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have three items for boards and commissions. The first is to appoint members to the Clean Water Services Advisory Committee. Do we have a staff report? They're not mandatory, but I always like to check.
Yes, Mark Jockers will provide the report.
Thank you. Welcome, Mark Jockers.
Thank you very much, Chair, and members of the commission. We're asking you today to make appointments to Clean Water Services Advisory Commission, or CWAC. There are two positions that we are asking for appointments to. One is a voting position as an environmental rep, and we are recommending Jan Wilson, who's the executive director of the Twelveth River Keepers. And the other one is a non-voting rep, which is a representative of our member cities. We're asking you to appoint Sherilyn Lombos as the primary member, and Joe Gall as an alternate.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners?
Move for the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously for to zero. Thank you, commissioners. Next, we have an action item to appoint members to the Cultural Coalition of Washington County. Do we have a staff report on this by any chance? Nope, we don't. So we have an action before us to appoint Marilyn Haynes, Ramash Krishnatha Morthee, Teresa Payne, Andrea Tichi, and Bayless Yanis as new members of the Cultural Coalition of Washington County for a term ending December 31 of 2023. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move for the recommended requested action.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously for to zero. Next, we have a motion to announce vacancies and authorize recruitment of applicants through October 13 of 2020, or until all vacancies are filled. This is with regard to various boards and commission, Aging and Veterans Services Advisory Council, seven positions, Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, two positions, Fair Board, one position, Fairgrounds Advisory Committee, three positions, Homeless Plan Advisory Committee, two positions now and ten after December 31 of this, next year. I wonder if that... Yep, sorry, got my years wrong. Housing Advisory Committee, two positions now, North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Committee, hey, we just had our budget scheduled, two positions available now, a Northwest Area Communication on Transportation, two positions, Planning Commission, one position now and two positions after January 31. Rural Roads Operation and Maintenance Advisory Committee, two positions available now, Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Council, one position available after December 31, and West Slope Community Library Advisory Board, one position available now. What are the wishes of the commission? Ah, you're right. Thank you. Do we need to authorize the recruitment?
Nope.
Okay, even though it says to authorize the recruitment, got it, that's just verbal. Thank you for making sure I do it right. I appreciate it, having a parliamentarian here with me, so that there is no doubt in our records. Great. Next, we'll be moving on to various public hearings associated with land use and transportation. This is where our ordinance season really comes into action. So first, we have ordinance number 865. Could we have a motion to read ordinance number 865 by title only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously for to zero. Mr. Raplié.
Ordinance number 865, an ordinance amending the comprehensive framework plan for the urban area, the Rural Natural Resource Plan, and certain community plans to reflect urban growth boundary expansion areas.
So this is the first time this is before the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing, and with that, we have a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Stephen Roberts, Director of Land Use and Transportation. As usual, I'm going to turn things over to Teresa Churniak, our principal planner, who's going to introduce a couple members of her team that will walk us through these next three ordinances. And just by way of context, we have the three hearings today. The first one, we are asking you to continue that one until March of next year, and Teresa will walk through the whys. The other two, we're anticipating that should the board support those two, that they could be adopted today. So there are associated findings that go with those two ordinances that are also a part of your agenda. And so I think with that, I'll turn it over to Teresa to get us going.
Will Teresa be taking us through that? Oh, there she is. Now we can see both Teresa Churniak as well as Todd Berkowitz.
Great.
Right. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Teresa Churniak, Principal Planner with Community Planning. We do have three ordinances before you today, and the staff people on each of those will do the presentations. So Todd Berkowitz is the first on the urban growth boundary expansion area, ordinance number 865. Thanks.
Right, if we're ready to go. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Todd Berkowitz, Associate Planner with Community Planning, and I'm here today to present ordinance number 865, which would formally transfer approved 2018 UGB expansions from the rural to the urban area. So as you likely recall, that in 2018, Beaverton, Hillsborough, and King City each submitted proposals for UGB expansion into adjacent urban reserve areas. Each city is required by Metro for UGB expansion, developed a concept plan for its proposed expansion area. The board had acknowledged each of these plans, and Metro Council approved three proposals in 2018. The Land Conservation and Development Commission, or LCDC, then approved them afterwards. Next slide, please. The expansions include three areas that went through the standard The expansions include three areas that went through the standard UGB expansion process and a fourth that was brought in under special conditions. They include Beaverton's Cooper Mountain, King City's Beef Ben South, and Hillsborough's Witch Hazel Village South. In addition, West Union Village Square, which is shown here at the top of the map, was brought into the UGB under special conditions to alleviate a health hazard from prevailing subtext system. Included here is also the acreage and projected housing for these areas. In total, the UGB expansions encompass just over 1,900 acres. Next slide, please. Once UGB expansions are approved and acknowledged, counties must designate the areas with interim land use. The need for ordinance 865 is codified in state, regional, and county policy frameworks, including the Oregon statewide planning goals and Title 11 of Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. At the county level, the Comprehensive Framework Plan contemplates application of the future development 20-acre designation, or FD20, to all newly added urban land in order to protect and retain it for future urban density. Lastly, the Community Development Code identifies uses allowed or prohibited in FD20 as well as dimensional requirements and other development standards. Next slide, please. Ordinance 865 changes, makes changes to multiple comprehensive plan elements, including the Rural Natural Resource Plan, the Comprehensive Framework Plan, and four community plans for Aloha, Reedville, Cooper Mountain, Bull Mountain, East Hillsborough, and West Union. Changes generally include removing rural land use designations that are no longer applicable and adding designations for urban areas, transferring mapped GO5 resources from the rural to the urban area, assigning expansion areas to the community plan and subarea, and revising minor references in the comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. Each of the three primary UGB expansions are currently comprised of up to four rural land uses, primarily zones for agricultural and forest use. Each of these areas contain GO5 resources that will be transferred to the rural area. Next slide, please. Land uses in each of these three primary UGB expansions would receive the FD20 designation, which would allow some different uses at different levels of review, but uses that are still limited because their designation, because the designation is intended as an interim holding district until areas, until the areas are annexed by cities. FD20 would also prohibit some minor uses currently allowed in rural areas, including feedlots and recreational marijuana facilities. Next slide, please. In summary, we reiterate that ordinance 865 aims to meet established protocols for the UGB expansion process, reclassifies land from the rural area to the urban area to advance this process, and applies the FD20 designation and maintains GO5 resource protections. Next slide, please. Public notice was properly mailed and posted. The board approved a Measure 56 notice, which was mailed to affected property owners as required. When a proposed land use regulation would change the zoning of a property or limits or prohibits uses currently allowed. Next slide, please. Prior to the start of the August 5th PC hearing, one property owner noted that the insufficient, that insufficient time was provided to respond to the Measure 56 notice. On advice of county council and staff, the Planning Commission continued the hearing to August 19th and continued to accept public testimony to meet the Measure 56 notice requirements. At the hearing, some property owners requested that their current land uses be continued and had questions about tax implications of the change of the rural land use districts to FD20. After the August 5th hearing, staff also received a request from the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, to delay adoption of the ordinance until appeals of the LCDC UGB expansion decision are completely resolved. Next slide, please. In August, in the August 19th Planning Commission hearing, the commission deliberated on whether to recommend approval of ordinance 865 without the provision of findings or additional details about potential tax implications. It voted five to two to recommend that the board approve ordinance 865 as filed and contingent on resolution of all appeals of the LCDC 2018 UGB expansion decision. Next slide. Thank you. Staff recommends the board conduct the public hearing, hear the staff report and public testimony, and continue the hearing on March 2nd, 2021, to allot time for the resolution of all appeals. Next slide, please. And that is the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I'd like to, I'd just like to refer to the two letters we received regarding this ordinance and specifically to section 450-5.3.
Commissioner Willie, those letters are 866. We are on 865.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong one. Okay. Thank you, Kevin. I will defer that question.
Any other commissioner questions? I have a question. If we could go back a couple of slides with the information that went to the Planning Commission and the summary sheet, one more, there you go. And the summary sheet for this item. You talked about a individual who submitted written testimony expressing concern regarding the ability to continue a farm use that is not allowed as a new use in the new district. So that person will be able, as I understand it, to continue their farm use while during the course of the change around their property might in fact develop and urbanize, correct?
That, that is correct. I believe the concern was related to the fact that at times, as, as economies change, somebody, a farmer may decide to, to put in a new use or just continue a use. And so it, it limits that ability to, to end uses and start new ones.
Yep, okay.
So.
Great. Just wanted to verify that. So seeing no further commissioner questions, I'm going to open a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak to us?
We do not on this issue, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak to us on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close today's public hearing and continue the hearing to March, I'm on the right one? Yes, March 2nd of 2021.
Well, I would, I would, I would, on the basis of fact that there is current litigation on the advice of county council, I move that we continue this hearing to March 2nd, 2021.
Do we need to have a motion on that?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the hearing to March 2nd of 2021. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the two of you. Next, we'll move on to ordinance number 866.
Will we read by title only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read this by title only. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Mr. Raplié.
Ordinance number 866, an ordinance addressing minor amendments to the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area, the Bethany Community Plan, and the Community Development Code.
Thank you. And yes, we do have the staff change on the screen that I was looking for. Thank you. And now I'll turn it over.
And Brian Robb will make this presentation.
Good morning, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. I'm Brian Robb, Associate Planner with Community Planning, and I'll be presenting on ordinance 866, the Housekeeping and Minor Amendments Ordinance. Next slide, please. Ordinance number 866 proposes general housekeeping, minor amendments, and updates with community plan, which community planning makes generally on a yearly basis. The proposed amendments include limited changes to the Comprehensive Framework Plan, the Bethany Community Plan, and the Community Development Code. These changes are meant to improve accuracy, clarity, and consistency with federal, state, and local laws. Next slide, please. Ordinance number 866 proposes amendments to Community Framework Plan Policy 41, the Policy on Urban Growth Boundary Expansions, to remove Map C, Future Development Areas. This map included Area 93, also known as Bonnie Slope West, and Area of Special Concern Number Eight. No longer a future development area, the county completed comprehensive planning and applied long-term land use designations to the Bonnie Slope West area through adoption of the subarea into Cedar Mills, Cedar Mill Community Plan in 2015. That ordinance intended to remove those features of the map, but were not done so at the time. Ordinance number 866 also adds Bonnie Slope West to the CPO Boundary Map in Appendix F of the Community Framework Plan. Next slide, please. Proposed amendments in this ordinance also include removal of adult bookstores and adult motion picture theaters, the definitions and standards for both pursuant to court rulings regarding First Amendment rights. Ordinance 866 also amends definition, the definitions of recreational vehicles and park model recreational vehicles to reflect new definitions adopted by the Department of Motor Vehicles as a result of the passage of Senate Bill 410 in 2019. The ordinance would also allow for the expansion of existing schools through a Type III review in the R15 district. Furthermore, the ordinance updates terms, references, and grammatical errors throughout the plan. Next slide, please. Additional proposed amendments include allowing passenger vehicles, services in industrial, in the industrial district when accessory and incidental to vehicle repair services. It would update the definition of existing dog training facilities within the EFU and AF20 standards to mean farm buildings that existed on or before January 1st, 2019. And this is in accordance with state law changes. And the ordinance would also change various sections regarding accessory dwelling units to clarify requirements. Next slide, please. At the Planning Commission, we received testimony and deliberations on several topics. First of which was on the changes to the Significant Natural Resource Map within the Bethany Community Plan. And those concerns that were raised included why we have two separate maps in the first place between the Bethany Community Plan and the North Bethany Significant Natural and Cultural Resources Map. We found that topic to be something that was not necessarily appropriate for the Minor Amendments Ordinance, but is something that we may take into consideration for future ordinance seasons. Additional testimony that we received were on the new state rules for dog training facilities in EFU and AF20 districts. The testimony presented concerns over the utilization of farmland for other uses, such as dog training facilities. Also, in a second letter from the same resident dated August 30th, just a couple of days ago, additional testimony was submitted expressing concerns that we, in our CDC, were allowing dog training facilities not subject to list of requirements under Section 340-5.3. Those are additional exclusions to uses in, except, in farm use areas that, that are delineated by the state in order to not interfere with accepted farm practices. Ultimately, the Planning Commission made recommendation to adopt the ordinance as filed, five to zero. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, adopt ordinance number 866, and in a separate motion, adopt the associated findings. Next slide, please. If you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to address those. And that concludes my presentation.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Willie.
Well, yes, now I can refer to those two letters, since I'm on the right ordinance. So talk to me about why they want remove the clause not subject to Section 340-5.3 from Section 1314. So what, what exactly does that mean?
Within the Community Development Code, 340-5.3 lists certain other restrictions on certain uses on farm, EFU and AF20 properties to make sure that they're not impacting accepted farm uses. Those requirements that are listed in our Community Development Code are taken, taken from the ORS under Section 215. And were not included in the new bill, SB 410, I believe it was. The only change that was made in the state law was a delineation of what date the existing farm building was built. So dog training facilities can only be used in those buildings that existed prior to January 1st, 2019. So those additional rules are supplied to us through ORS 215 and do not include specifically dog training facilities. They're excluded by state law as having to meet those additional requirements.
So if I could summarize from my own understanding, the statement of uses which may be allowed but are not subject to Sections 340-5.3, that language already exists in the Community Development Code. And what, for example, in Section 340-5, in this iteration, all that is recommended from the Planning Commission and staff is to strike the word "pre-existing" in front of farm building and to add that existed on January 1, 2019 in order to comply with the latest ORS requirements.
That is correct.
Yeah. And the letters, or at least one of them that we received, has asked to remove a section of this language that we're actually required by ORS to include.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I know that helped me to think it through as well. So. Any other questions, Commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to open a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to testify?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have Jennifer Flanagan, which I will allow to talk right now. Jennifer, can you hear us?
Ms. Flanagan, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please go ahead. Do you have three minutes?
Thank you. I do. Thank you for allowing me to participate. My name is Jennifer Flanagan. I live at 29697 Southwest McNehey Road. We've lived in the rural area of Washington County for 16 years and in Washington County for a total of 25 years. I have to take exception to, I had a prepared statement here, but I have to take exception to the conversation happening. The phrase eliminating that Section 340-5.3 is not in the state law. The state law only updates the date of the ag building for dog training. Nowhere else in the Community Development Code is there a carve-out for non-conforming uses to eliminate 5.3 from application. This only is coming up related specifically to dog training, and it is not in the state law that was being applied for this ag building. So if you pass this ordinance, it is specific to Washington County. And I have searched the Community Development Code, and nowhere else in the Community Development Code has 5.3 been called out as an exception. So here are a few examples of impacts that you'd be choosing here. So dog barking. The dog barking happening in the non-permitted dog training facility that I happen to live next to, which forced us that I happen to live next to, which forced us into this land use process, easily exceeds the DEQ allowable noise levels. And dog barking is a known stressor to livestock. And it will cause stress in cattle. It will cause horses to bolt and run through fences. And that's what you'd be choosing is dog barking over the health and welfare of livestock farms in Washington County. It also says you'd be choosing dust impact. So we live on a single-lane rural gravel road, and that dog training would see about a hundred and twenty car trips per day. So two of the original farmhouses are literally fifteen feet off the road. One is home to a cancer survivor whose home's been there for a generation. And the other one is a retired school worker with asthma who has her children visiting. And then lastly, that you'd be, the dog waste involved in this exceeds EPA standards. So I really just wanted to make sure that you're aware of what you'd be passing. That section specifically is not in the original House Bill twenty-one oh-six that changes the date of ag building training. It is specific to, only to Washington County and only for dog training. And frankly, it really feels like a specific, some sort of favoritism carve-out for dog training. And I'd appreciate it if the board would take a look deeper into that section of the ordinance, because I think it's, A, not aligned with state law, and B, would have significant impact in the rural area. Thank you.
Mr. Rapleyee, if I could just clarify. What this ordinance does is the language of three forty-five-point-one, that first sentence is the same as it has been prior to today. And the part of the ordinance for today is asking us to change item C.
Madam Chair, that is correct. It, you know, really, all it's doing is striking the word "pre-existing farm building" and replacing it with the words that "that existed on January one, two thousand and nineteen." So it doesn't seem to be that dramatic of a change. Those are already, you know, seems like non-conforming uses that would be able to be continued. And I, and I said I haven't been briefed on this issue, but I am looking at HB twenty-one oh-six and seeing what those provisions provide. But I know it's about, you know, the dog training facilities.
So what I understand, excuse me, what I understand, the testimony in the letter to be is asking us to remove that existing language separate from this ordinance, to remove the "but are not subject to Section three forty-five-point-three."
Right.
I understand the testimony to be asking us to do.
And again, that's all pre-existing language. And I am looking at HB twenty-one oh-six, and the statutory language that was added in bold is "in existence on January one, two thousand and nineteen," which is exactly the language that the staff is proposing.
So I'm clear on, on the two and the differences?
We are required to follow state law, and the changes reflect state law changes. I do understand that what's being suggested to us by the Flanigans would not be in conformance with state law.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Skowton. So yes, we do have to follow state law. And even if we don't change this code provision, we would still be bound by it under Oregon law. So we are just conforming our code to the state law to make it consistent and easy for our residents to follow.
So the, the ordinance is making the specific change that this latest state law is requiring us to do to strike the pre-existing. What, what our, what the Flanigans are asking us to do is to do something further than that, to in fact, remove a different clause that isn't called out in state law.
The inconsistency is the caller is saying that that isn't state law. So that's, that's the interpretation we need to have. We all believe it is, but she believes it's not. Can you clarify that? I know you haven't been briefed, so it's hard for you.
Right, so this is a little bit off the cuff, but I'm looking at the HB twenty-one oh-six, and it does list the dog training classes. And again, it strikes the word "pre-existing" and adds "in existence" in twenty-nine oh-six. And I believe that those are, you know, exempt uses under the state law. So I think it would be just consistent with existing language and complying with state law.
And, and we could provide some additional clarification from staff if that would be helpful too, from our perspective. But, but what we, yeah, what we believe is that, under the current statute, we do not have the ability to make this use subject to the impact test criteria, which is what the, what the resident is suggesting.
Okay. Let's see if we have anyone else signed up to testify during this public hearing?
We did not have anyone else who registered, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the room who wishes to testify? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And do we have any additional comments from staff based upon what we've heard in the public hearing?
I'll ask Ann Kelly to, to talk a bit about the Ms. Flanigan's testimony.
Oh, sure. So as I understand it, what the Flanigans are asking is, like Stephen Roberts said, that we apply the Farm and Forest Impact Test requirements. The CDC section that the Flanigans refer to, three forty and three forty-four, five-point-three, that actually applies the Farm and Forest Impact Test to certain other uses, but not to this use. It hasn't previously, and it doesn't now. And what it's doing is applying, or what three forty-five-point-three does is reflect Farm and Forest Impact Test requirements that are in ORS two-fifteen-two-nine-six. And statute specifically says in counties that have adopted marginal lands, blah, 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 that's us, the following uses may be established in an area zone for exclusive farm use subject to Farm and Forest Impact Test requirements, that ORS two-fifteen-two-nine-six. What's listed under that is, does not include these dog training facilities. Dog training facilities are included under the section above, which does not apply the impact test requirements. So because state law does not make this use subject to those Farm and Forest Impact Tests, we're not really in a position to do so either. And that said, if there was a dog facility that didn't meet the specifications, like the two thousand and nineteen cutoff, they could conceivably be subject to those Farm and Forest Impact Test requirements, but not anything meeting these very basic requirements.
So to put it simply, having this provision but are not subject to Section three forty-five-point-three, if I understand this correctly, is in fact, following the state model, state requirements?
Yes.
Are we all clear on that?
Just to repeat that, again, the, the, the changes, or to ask more accurately, the language that's proposed by the Flanigans is not in conformance with state law, if I understood the county council's opinion. Is that correct, Mr. Rapleyee?
Pardon me, Commissioner Skowton. Could you repeat the question?
That, that the suggestions that, that were made for, for the, this ordinance.
Yes, the proposed suggestions would not be in conformance with state law.
We have to follow state law.
Yeah, and we have to follow state law.
Thank you. That was, I thought that was the answer that you gave a few minutes ago. I just want to make sure that.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Just as an observation, hasn't this, isn't this entire process driven by the fact that they changed the eligibility for buildings' date to a January one, which then allowed the person who wants to have the dog training facility, their buildings would then comply? So it seems like we've got, no pun intended, the tail wagging the dog here. Is, was, is that the way this worked? Is that they got the date changed for eligibility for the buildings, was then necessitated some of the changes in this code? Or am I just combining two things that aren't related?
I'll, I'll take that one, I guess, to start with. I believe that you've summarized the situation pretty accurately. I think, I think a change in the state law facilitated the, this activity on a particular property. And so we're just simply, as, as counsel has said, we're just simply amending our development code to be consistent with the updated statute.
Somebody's got a lot of horsepower.
And we're all living with the consequences.
Dog power.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
The only comment that I'd have, I see that clearly we're just following state law, but for those who are impacted, it would be helpful to them, I think, if there are any grievances and alternatives that they might exercise. I don't know what those would be, but, you know, in that section, Softay Road is down in my particular district, and that is very rural right in there. So they're probably concerned about the traffic. About making people walk away. So I don't know if there's other things we can look into in the permission permitting process of these, this training facility, and I suspect a kennel as well. I mean, usually they go hand-in-hand to help mitigate some of the problems. As far as the language, it sounds like it's state law.
Yeah. And I would say I think we're certainly sympathetic to the concerns the Flanigans have raised. And, and we will have limited capabilities to address some of the other potential externalities of the use, given that the use is a permitted, permitted activity. But yes, we certainly are sympathetic to the concerns that have been raised.
Yep. I can certainly empathize with the situation that we are now, now faced with. So we have conducted the first public hearing, and I'm wondering if, what are the board wishes with regard to adopting ordinance number eight-six-six?
Close the hearing?
Yeah, I closed it.
I would move for adoption, Madam Chair.
Sorry, I didn't know what the hand signals meant.
Yeah, either way.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, we can, Madam Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa, excuse. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Skowton?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Aye. The ordinance passes unanimously forward to zero. Next, I'm wondering if we could have a motion to approve the resolution in order to adopt the findings of ordinance number eight-six-six.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five, four to zero. Next, we'll move on to our third ordinance of the day, ordinance number eight-sixty-seven. Do we have the staff switch on that? Great, we do. Do we have a motion to read ordinance eight-sixty-seven by title only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Mr. Rapleyee?
Ordinance number eight-sixty-seven, an ordinance amending the Community Development Code relating to safe vehicle camping, parking for homeless persons to aid in transition to stable housing.
Staff report, please.
Thank you. Hello, Chair Harrington and commissioners. I'm Ann Kelly, Senior Planner in Long Range Planning. This ordinance proposes Community Development Code regulations for temporary vehicle camping for homeless persons. For people who have lost their homes, living in a vehicle may be their only option besides sleeping on the street. And accommodating safe places for them to park while living in vehicles can help stabilize their lives and improve their chances of access to housing, services, and employment. Next slide, please. So several purposes, we're driving this ordinance, actually. It would allow safe vehicle camping as part of a program to transition to stable housing. It also responds to a Beaverton request. Beaverton requested as part of our Long Range Planning Program that we adopt a program similar to their, to their own so that they can serve a site in unincorporated Washington County. We also hope that the ordinance will open the door for other public entities to serve sites in unincorporated urban areas of the county as well. Next slide, please. So for a little background, there was a recent ruling, Martin versus City of Boise. The U.S. Supreme Court declined to hear a Ninth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals ruling. And that ruling found that a city ordinance violates the Eighth Amendment, which prohibits cruel and unusual punishment if the ordinance criminalizes homeless people for sleeping outdoors when they have no alternative. So because the U.S. Supreme Court declined to hear that appeal, that, that ruling stands. And across the West Coast, a number of jurisdictions have responded to the ruling by providing homeless people with safe places to happily sleep. And more recently, also to shelter in place and social distance. High rents and home prices across the West Coast, as well as housing shortages and lack of shelter space, are increasing homelessness. And in Oregon, over sixty-four percent of homeless people are without shelter. Oregon also has the highest rate of unsheltered families in the U.S. Oregon statute governing, county governing bodies and county home rule includes a provision that's been around since nineteen ninety-nine. And it lets local jurisdictions allow religious institutions to host homeless people in vehicles. It requires, or it applies a three-vehicle cap, and it requires sanitary facilities. And it lets local jurisdictions apply additional conditions. So we did see some broader allowances proposed in legislation this year. They, they didn't end up going through, but we do expect them to come back in two thousand and twenty-one. And those would address other types of accommodations and other sites that might host this use. Also, there's a potential provision to lift the three-vehicle cap and let local jurisdictions decide what the cap should be. Next slide, please. So looking at Beaverton's program, which is largely the model for what we're proposing here. Beaverton actually modeled their program after a Eugene program that started in the nineties. Eugene's program now serves hundreds yearly, and it has ninety-eight vehicles, spaces across Eugene and Springfield. Beaverton, with just compassion, started their own program in two thousand and nineteen. It allows safe parking without a permit on all non-residential properties that meet minimal criteria. And it does require a program to transition people to housing as part of the use. In a year, the City of Beaverton has hosted thirty-seven people and housed twelve. And as of April, nine of them remained in the program in vehicles. Next slide, please. Beaverton's experience with compliance and complaints is fairly minimal. They did have one vehicle guest that was banned for noise issues early on. Other noise issues were resolved by the program manager through communications with participants and neighbors and through onsite relocation of certain activities. Most compliance issues, though, involve participants failing to meet program rules that are not related to law enforcement or land use, but rather to the required program that helps people transition to housing. Next slide, let's see. Thank you very much. So our proposed community development criteria would exclude the use from the development permit requirement. would exclude the use from the development permit requirement subject to certification of compliance with the program rules, the non-land use rules, through a resolution in order that Housing Services has prepared, and I believe that's on your September 15th Board agenda. The CDC criteria would allow the use on religious institution sites in any district, or on other types of non-residential sites where both the use and the district are non-residential. It would apply a three-vehicle limit, but it also acknowledges the ORS provision may change. It leaves us some leeway to change the cap. And the CDC provisions also apply setbacks to protect neighboring uses and onsite users from conflicts. Permit exclusion considerations that we thought about in developing this ordinance, while we considered the significant needs statewide to facilitate this use, we did not want to create barriers that would potentially be posed by permitting times and costs. And we understand that many jurisdictions allow this use outside of their development codes without permits, and sometimes as emergency uses. Next slide, please. Other considerations involve the fact that, like type 1 uses, safe vehicle parking as a use excluded from permit requirements would not be subject to public notice. This is consistent with practices of many jurisdictions that specifically avoid publicizing host sites for the protection of participants. Without notice, though, clear and objective criteria are needed to protect neighbors and site users. Specific to this use, we are looking to provide for smooth operation and limit conflicts upfront by allowing it only on the non-residential sites, and requiring the sanitation and storage facilities, and also the setbacks, including increased setbacks when this use is adjacent to a residential use. Also, the requirement for certification of compliance with the non-land use rules is a factor in making this a use exempt from permitting requirements. So again, the program rules are not really land use, thus we didn't put them in the community development code, and our wonderful partners in Housing Services developed those that you'll see on September 15th. They are meant to ensure that certification and enforcement are not arbitrary. We want things to be very consistent. They require proof of participant case management by a public agency or nonprofit. They require storage and sanitation facilities. They reacquire agreements that Housing Services can go onto this site, and agreements that no fee or rent will be charged to homeless participants. They also specify that if a site owner is non-compliant, Housing Services will revoke the certification and report the noncompliance to land use and transportation. Regarding compliance and enforcement, since the CDC does require that certification with program rules, if the certification is revoked, then LUT would have some enforcement potential. Locational criteria for things like vehicle parking and the onsite amenities would also be an LUT enforcement issue. Law enforcement, of course, would handle, would be handled by the Sheriff's Office. The Health Department would be responsible for sanitation, compliance issues, and the program manager would be responsible for any program rule breaches and resolving those. We have received a bit of public testimony on this use. We got some oral testimony at the hearing from one resident. He generally expressed support, but did request minimum site acreage and maximum vehicle size to minimize conflicts with offsite neighbors. We also received a number of letters. One resident had concerns about rural impacts from a business that may be operating in Multnomah County, and it does not appear relevant to this ordinance or to Washington County. We also received a letter from the Fair Housing Council and the housing land advocates, seeking earlier goal findings, especially related to housing. And we received two letters of support, one from Beaverton's mayor, and the other from Tuolton Hills Parks and Recreation District. In our planning commission hearing, deliberations included several PC members expressing their own individual perspectives. One thought that neighbors might perceive this use as an impediment to enjoyment of their property, and lack recourse without notice or appeal opportunities that are afforded by type 2 and type 3 permit processes. Another planning commissioner had reservations about making a recommendation to you before the program rules were fully defined by Housing Services, and those are now defined, and again, will be upcoming September 15th. Another planning commissioner had an interest in the county facilitating with little or no regulation, broader access to safe shelter, parking, and public restrooms for all homeless persons. And ultimately, the vote was 3 to 2 to recommend approval as filed. One, no vote. The person felt that there was not enough regulation around this use, and the other, no vote. That planning commissioner felt that there was too much restriction. So, understanding that this is only one of a number of programs the county is working on to address housing need and homelessness, we do recommend, staff and the PC recommend that the Board conduct the public hearing and adopt this ordinance, ordinance number 867, as filed, and in a separate motion, adopt associated findings. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I have two. Clarification. Since it's just not done on everyone's property, they have to agree to have that happen. Who's the party who agrees?
So, the property owner would be approached by someone who's operating the program. So, the program manager and the property owner would need to come to some arrangement about utilization of that site for the program. And then, as Ann alluded to, there is a mechanism whereby the Director of Housing Services for the county would actually review the criteria and the program itself, the elements of the parking program, to help ensure that it really is designed and intended to help facilitate people transitioning into a stable housing situation.
My question might have sounded simple, and you said the owner, which I expected, but not all property owners have the right to do that, as you know. And so, if you went to the owner of a property that has been rented, subleased, it could be several tenants, it could be one, who agrees? And if they're multi-use, and I can think of some, even in Tigard area, where you might have a church who is renting space because they're startup with other small businesses, and an owner, would you have to get concurrence of everyone? Or do you only get it of the owner, and then you let the owner and the tenants fight it out whether or not they have a right to do that? How does that work?
It's an excellent question. So, because this is an exempt use and not subject to a specific permitting requirement, we would not dictate how that portion of a transaction, let's say, would occur. So, relative to relationships between a program manager, tenants, and a property owner, that would really be up to those parties to figure out.
You just said you'd go with the owner, but you would go deeper, I presume. If I rent a piece, which I don't, I own, but if I rented a piece of property and had it, you know, somebody else owned it, I would have conditions on use, and so, not like it if someone were to grant a use without consulting with me. So, just cautioning, I don't see any problem, but I see that there's some relationship issues. Then you have condominium properties, representative of four, you have properties who have all kinds of different interests because of their usage type. So, it's a little more complicated than making it, a lot more complicated. The other thing is a setback, that's my second question. So, you own property A, I own property B, you provide facilities on property A, maybe I don't like them on property B. Is there a setback requirement, or you can thread up to the, in those areas where there's almost zero lot line setback, are you going to get permission on both sides, or is it only for a single? So, if property A says, that's wonderful, and property B is really protesting, property B, and that was a notice question, I think somebody asked, have any ability to influence anything, or at least be heard?
Ann, do you want to take that?
Yes, I do. If I could backpedal a little bit as well to answer your first question, Commissioner Rogers. Our CDC requirements do require that both the building on the property and the lot are owned and occupied by the owner. So, there wouldn't be a tenant-owner issue involved. And the other, the second question, we do look to make this use operate smoothly with the conditions that we've applied. There is a 10-foot setback to neighboring uses, and a 20-foot setback when the neighboring use is residential, but we are not requiring the public notice, or the public type 2 or 3 process that would require a notice. Even a type 1 doesn't require the notice. So, I guess that the provisions to work out any issues between onsite and offsite neighbors would be left to the communications through the program manager and enforcement issues if need be.
Can I repeat that? Actually, I understand. So, only an owner-occupier would be allowed, I mean, I stay upfront, I like this, and I like the provisions that allow churches and others to grant this. But, so, you'd have to be an owner-occupier in our code, so that solves this first problem. We're not going to have tenant issues. And then the second one, there's a 10-foot on commercial, 25-foot on residential setback, but there is no provisions to notify abutting neighbors, much like we have in other, other sort of uses of property. So, have I got all that right? So, I understand?
That is right.
All right.
Yes.
Any other Commissioner questions? I have a question. Ann, I've heard you mention September 15th a couple of times. Could you please remind me what September 15th is all about?
As I understand it, Housing Services has put, I believe, an action item on the September 15th agenda that includes the resolution in order containing the rules for the program to transition to stable housing that is required by this ordinance. But because those rules are not land use-related, they are outside of the community development code, and will require certification through Housing Services.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear that what we're working towards today is having the public hearing, adopting the ordinance, and adopting the findings. So, great.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it before I went further in the process.
And if I could, Madam Chair, I do have copies of that draft resolution in order that Ann has referred to, that would come back to you on September 15th, if any of you are interested in a copy of that. And I would just characterize this resolution in order, it's really part of an implementing mechanism that would allow the Housing Services folks to participate in the implementation of this ordinance.
Well, let's see where we're at with regard to adopting the ordinance first.
Great, thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments before we move on? Okay, so, we've read it by title only, we've heard the staff report, now we're going to conduct the public hearing. I hereby open a public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to testify?
We do not, Madam Chair, and as referenced by Ann, the Board did receive and was provided the two letters from the City of Beaverton and Tuolton Hills Parks and Recs District for the record.
Yep, we got those electronically and in hard copy. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to ordinance number 867?
Madam Chair, based on some of the policy considerations that are outlined in the two letters from the Tuolton Hills Parks and Recs District and City of Beaverton, I move that we adopt ordinance number 866. Oh, it should be 867.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Willie?
Aye.
Once again, Commissioner Treese, excuse. Commissioner Rogers?
Aye to both, 866 and 867.
Noted. Commissioner Scoughton?
Yeah, I, sorry.
And Chair Harrington?
We are all here to kind of check up on each other, because occasionally we...
Yes. The ordinance passes unanimously, ordinance number 867, four to zero. Thank you. And what are the wishes of the Commission with regard to adopting the findings of 867?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And for our next aspect of the agenda, we're moving on to action items. And the first of our action items is to declare an extension of the emergency, our public health emergency related to COVID-19 until September 29th of 2020, under Washington County Code, Chapter 8.36, to support responsive activities to COVID-19. We've been through this a few times. Do we need a staff report?
No.
Nope.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Our next action item is a very exciting item related to Washington County's work on the Affordable Housing Bond program, and we're here today to help ensure that our community has the opportunity to hear that great story as part of our action to approve the concept endorsement for seven proposed projects. Go ahead, staff, please introduce yourself and fill us all in.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board. I'm Josh Kreitz. I'm the Assistant Director for the Housing Department. I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
I'm Shannon Wilson, Interim Housing Development Manager.
So, we're here this morning to recommend a proposed slate of affordable housing projects for Metro bond funding. As a reminder, in 2018, the voters in our region approved a historic affordable housing measure that'll bring nearly $653 million to create 3,900 units of affordable housing in our region. In Washington County, there's three implementing partners, Washington County, of course, the City of Hillsborough, and the City of Beaverton. Our goal in Washington County is to create 814 units of affordable housing, and for that, the county will be receiving $116.5 million in Metro bond funding. I think you mentioned exciting, and I want to kind of capitalize on that enthusiasm, because this project has been going on for a couple of years now. Before I came to the county, you were all involved in this, having conversations about this, and really putting a lot of work in. And so, some really positive news is that for our community to know, there's 81 units of affordable housing in Tigard. It's our Phase 1 project called the View Finder, and that project is already underway, so that's really exciting news, and hopefully everyone get a chance to get out there and see that. And today, we have more exciting news, which is we're going to bring you seven proposed projects that would create another 623 units of affordable housing in Washington County, and it would also bring over $200 million in economic development to our county. Just how that's broke down, it's around $73.6 million in Metro bond funds. That'll be leveraged at 2 to 1 ratio. Before I hand it over to Shannon, we also want to make sure that both the Board and our community members understand how rigorous the process was for selecting and going through these proposed projects, because that's really important, the clarity and transparency for everybody. So, it went through a staff threshold report, it went through a So it went through a staff threshold report, it went through a third-party financial analyst, a full evaluation committee, and after that, our Housing Advisory Committee, which has many development, financial, and social services experts on it, all had a chance to review that and give us feedback. These projects have all been vetted then on development priorities and the goals and strategies of Washington County's local implementation plan. Went through a financial kind of analysis to ensure that they can meet the 60-year affordability threshold that's involved. So at this point, I'm going to hand it off to Shannon. We look forward to hearing any comments and feedback. Thank you.
Well, hello, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to be with you here today and as an action item for this exciting program and our proposed projects here. So if we could go to the next slide. I do want to just start out by just kind of level-setting us all with our regard to our target and resources for Washington County. So overall, our Metro, excuse me, Metro framework unit production targets for the county are for us to produce 814 units of regulated affordable housing. And with regard to the Metro bond, whenever we refer to Washington County, that's our implementation area. So that is an area within the county that is also within Metro Service District. And so that does exclude some portions of Western Washington County, particularly the towns of North Plains and Banks. It also excludes the cities of Beaverton and Hillsborough, as Josh mentioned, because those are their own implementation jurisdictions and they have their own allotment of Metro bond funds and their own associated targets for that. So as a part of our broad overall goal to produce 814 units, 334 of those are intended to serve very low-income households, households at 30% median family income and below. And then half of the 814 units, which is 407 units, are intended to be family-sized units, so two-bedroom units or larger. So in addition to those Metro goals, we have Washington County-specific goals, which are in that local implementation strategy Josh also mentioned. So those are listed there in that chart. So out of that 814 units, 100 of those are intended to be permanent supportive housing units. Those are housing units for people who are chronically homeless and extremely low income. We also have a goal for minority women and emerging small business contracting and the development of all these projects, that 20% of those contracts are awarded to minority and women and emerging small business contractors and subcontractors. And then lastly, we have a goal, really a target, a set aside for a local nonprofit developer. So those are nonprofit affordable housing developers rooted in the county. And that's a set aside of $25 million out of the county's allocation of $116 million. The chart on the right gives a breakdown by percentage of the allocation to date currently. So you can see 10% of our, of the county's 116.5, nearly 116.5 million. 10% of that has been awarded to our Phase One project in Tigard. 68% was allocated in this current NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, and an additional 22% is to be allocated. So next slide, please. So to highlight our Notice of Funding Availability that recently happened this year. So the application was released in March with an application deadline of mid-May. That was extended due to COVID based on requests from our development partners. And so we received seven applications totaling requests of $71.5 million in requests out of that $80 million that we had released in the NOFA. So Josh kind of went through our evaluation process. It was very thorough and involved a lot of committee members as well as staff in related departments here at the county. And so we're very excited to bring our recommendation forward to you today. Next slide, please. So our recommendation is that your board provide or consider concept endorsement approval for six projects of these NOFA applicants. There is a seventh project that we are currently in negotiation with that development partner. Through our review process, it was recommended that that project be considered, potentially considered at a later date. There are some revisions that our review suggested to be made in terms of the financing and in terms of the structure as well. And so we hope to work on that with the development partner and bring that before you later this year. But these six projects that we have before you now achieve our development priorities that are outlined in the county's local implementation strategy. They also work towards those Metro targets and our county-specific goals. And all our new construction projects, and they all are ready to begin construction within the next six to 18 months, depending on their financing structure. And as an important goal of the Metro Affordable Housing Bond regionally and also here at the county, advancing racial equity. So nearly all of these projects that we are proposing today are either sponsored by or have a partnership with a culturally specific organization. So it's either as a co-developer or as a service provider at one of these properties. So next, I'll just, I'll give a brief overview of each of these proposed projects under our NOFA we are recommending for concept endorsement. And these are listed in just an alphabetical order, this is not a rank order. So the first is the Aloha Project, sponsored by Bridge Housing Corporation. Bridge provides affordable housing along the West Coast. This project is located near the intersection of 174th Avenue and TV Highway. So it is well-located near transit, near the high-frequency bus line 57 that runs along TV Highway. This project also has a large variety of units with studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And has, as you can see, has a goal of 30% for minority women, disadvantaged small business, and emerging small business contracting. So that is an excess of our county goal of 20%. The second project is the Basalt Creek Project, sponsored by Community Partners for Affordable Housing. They are one of the local nonprofits really based and rooted in Washington County. This project is located on the, in the Basalt Creek Planning Area, which is an area that combines Tuolton and parts of Tuolton and Wilsonville. So right now, the site is unincorporated in Washington County, but the Community Partners for Affordable Housing is working through the annexation process now to have it annexed into the city of Tuolton. And once that annexation process is complete, this is the only site that is zoned for residential development within that Basalt, for multifamily residential development within that Basalt Creek Planning Area. And so it's a great opportunity to put affordable housing in this, what will be a future high-opportunity area. This project also has a significant number of family-sized units. There you can see 42 two-bedroom units as well as 18 three-bedroom units. The third project is the Forest Grove Family Housing Project. This is a partnership between DCM Communities and the Housing Authority of Washington County. So DCM Communities, they're an experienced development team. So they would develop the project and then the Housing Authority would have long-term ownership and operation of the project. This is the smallest project we have that we're proposing to you today with 36 units, but an important one with the number of two-bedroom and three-bedroom units as well as its location in Forest Grove. They're in the western part of our implementation area for the bond. And then it also has a 35% aspirational goal for minority women, disadvantaged small business, or disadvantaged business enterprise and emerging small business contracting. The fourth project is located in Cornelius, right next to the Cornelius Fred Meyer. It is Plaza Los Amigos Project, sponsored. It's also a partnership between Biennestar, which is a local affordable housing nonprofit, and then Reach CDC, which is also a fairly local nonprofit developer, but works more broadly throughout Mownoma County and more regionally as well. And so they're bringing their two, you know, really levels of expertise here. So Reach is a long-term developer with a larger housing portfolio and Biennestar with really culturally specific services and a real connection particularly to the community of Cornelius.
Didn't Reach, weren't they the developers for the Arancow Project in Hillsborough there?
Yes, they were for Orchards at Arancow, the three phases, yes.
The three phases, yeah, and they're finished now and they look really nice. So they've done a good job on that.
Yes, yeah, thank you. So this project is also well-located right next to that Fred Meyer, as I mentioned, also near Highway 47 there, TV Highway that continues into Highway 47. It also has a significant number of family-sized units as well, which, given the demographic in Cornelius, is important, with 61 two-bedrooms and 12 three-bedrooms. This project also does propose 16 units of permanent supportive housing, which will go towards that goal, the overall goal of producing 100 units of permanent supportive housing with these funds. The fifth project is Terrace Glen Project, sponsored by Related Northwest. They're a developer, a private developer that works along the West Coast and are getting started here with regard to affordable housing development in this area with an experienced development team that has done work at Central City Concern and elsewhere. This project is located right across the street from Washington Square Mall, which is, does have a transit center there at the mall and good access to jobs and services as well as transit. This is the largest project we are bringing before you today with 144 units. You can see a wide variety of unit sizes from studio all the way up to four-bedroom there. So which four-bedroom units are very uncommon in all affordable housing and particularly in rental housing as well, so it can be very challenging to find. So out of that three- and four-bedroom total there in the chart, there are three four-bedroom units and 12 three-bedroom units. So that really, you know, provides a benefit to those large families looking for affordable housing. And the sixth project, the final one recommended through this NOFA Notice of Funding Availability, is the Tigard Senior Housing Project. This is a site, it's directly adjacent to the Tigard Senior Center. The sponsor is Northwest Housing Alternatives. They are a nonprofit affordable housing developer that works throughout the state. Northwest Housing Alternatives was awarded the site. So it's a city-owned site. The city had a request for proposals process at the end of last year. And Northwest Housing Alternatives was selected through that process to develop that site. And so this is what they have proposed for that. So 58 units of senior housing. Particular to this project is also the number of permanent supportive housing units. So 23 of those 58 units targeted for permanent supportive housing for seniors. And also a 30% contracting goal for minority women, disadvantaged business enterprise, and emerging small business. So in addition to our NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, we've also been working closely throughout our whole time of developing and implementing the Metro bond program. I've been working closely with our other jurisdictions implementing the bond in the county, Beaverton and Hillsborough. And so at the end of 2019, the City of Beaverton issued a request for proposals for our funding solicitation for $9 million. And as a part of that process, they received three applications. And they had asked Washington County with a portion of the county's allocation of bond funds to support one of the projects that applied for funds through that process. And then those units produced would count towards the county's unit production goal rather than the city's unit production goal. And so it's a great way for us to, for the county to collaborate with the City of Beaverton and work together to achieve our broad goal of affordable housing within the county and within the whole metro region. We do have an IGA in place between the county of Beaverton, between the county and the City of Beaverton, which allows for this opportunity to take place. And also our local implementation strategy does include this possibility for collaboration on a project like this. So it is an opportunity for 75 units in the South Cooper Mountain area. And Beaverton has also committed 400,000 of its own resources, not bond funds, an additional resource that they have for this project. So the next slide gives a brief overview of that project. So this is our seventh project we're bringing for recommendation for concept endorsement approval. It's located really across the street from Mountainside High School, the newest high school in the Beaverton School District. So very near the intersection of 175th and Shoals Ferry Road, which is a high-opportunity area, so it's well-located with regard to that. There is some transit available and it's likely as Cooper Mountain continues to develop along with River Terrace, which is already, has really developed significantly, but continues to develop, that the transit access will improve over time as well. And this project is also sponsored by Bridge Housing, so a well-known developer with capacity to do this work. And on the chart there, you can see the wide variety of unit types with one, two, and three-bedroom units proposed. So the next slide gives a map. One of the important components to Washington County's implementation of the bond is geographic dispersal. We have a large area, as you know, to work within. And so this map highlights where all of these proposed projects are, as well as our Phase One project, they're in Tigard. And then you can see there the legend, so the projects with the red pin then are the City of Beaverton projects, and yellow is the City of Hillsborough. And that is to date, both jurisdictions as well as Washington County, while future projects. And so this, this map will become even more detailed as time goes on. And so the next couple of slides really provide a portfolio dashboard. So they really roll up those seven project overviews into how they, and give us a look at how they help us achieve our Metro framework goals and our county goals. So here on this chart, you can see the total of number of units, all of those goals that we talked about at the beginning of the presentation, how our Phase One project contributes to those, how the NOFA projects, then those first six projects I reviewed contribute to it, and then the final project proposed today, the Bridge Cooper Mountain Project. And so that leads to that subtotal of total production of 704 units out of the 814 goal. 228 of those are for extremely low-income households. You can see the 387 for families, and then 58 out of the 100 units of permanent supportive housing. So that is the, you know, kind of where we're at with those goals if your board approves for concept endorsement, our proposal today. The next slide is a, is another way to look at the Metro bond framework and county goals in that first chart in the upper left. So looking at permanent supportive housing units, family size, 30% median family income units, and then the total number of units and how those are achieved sequentially with each, with the project, our Phase One project, with the NOFA projects, and the Bridge Cooper Mountain Project. That pie chart on the right gives you an update of the percentage of funds allocated per project. So again, with the Phase One, our NOFA projects, Bridge Cooper Mountain Project, and then the funds to be allocated. So if your board considers approval of concept endorsement of these seven projects today, then that would leave 26.8% of the Metro bond funds to be allocated for future projects. And then the final chart at the bottom left shows the leverage of Metro bond investment. So these eight projects, the seven proposed, as well as our one Phase One project, roll up into an investment of $85.5 million in Metro bond funds. And then that is leveraged by $164.8 million in other funds. Those include other funding sources, low-income housing tax credits, permanent debt, Metro transit-oriented development funds, some of our local home funds potentially. And then it has the total development costs there at the bottom. So the total economic investment in our county is $250.3 million combined between these eight projects. Again, that's the seven proposed today, and then our one Phase One project that's under construction. So the next slide gives a next step. So today, consider approval of concept endorsement for these seven projects. After that, Metro staff consider approval for concept endorsement in September. So that is something their chief operating officer does provide. And Metro staff, it has been working on kind of a parallel track to conduct their staff review during this time as well, so we can move quickly based on your recommendation and based on your considered approval. And then in addition to what we brought you today, we are working on two additional pipeline projects that we hope to bring to you before the end of this calendar year. So we are working very, you know, trying to work as quickly as we can to be good stewards of these funds and to make a good investment in affordable housing within the county. So with that, that is our presentation. We're happy to take any questions or comments that you have. Thank you.
I have a couple. On the, on the two that are in the pipeline, does that include the one that's still a work in progress that needs some further potential analysis and so forth?
Yes, so that would include that one project and then another project that we're working on internally that could be a way to provide a significant number of permanent supportive housing units.
And what's the, what's the potential magnitude of the Metro bond draw for those, for that number seven, potential number eight?
Oh, so for that additional project, I believe they had requested, it's about a, I believe it's about a 60-unit project, so they had requested, I believe, 10 to 15 million, probably closer to 10 million given the size of the project, but I can definitely give that, get that detail to you, so.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I just simply say, yahoos, get on with it.
Thank you.
Well, if I could clarify a couple of things with regard to getting on with it, as I understand, so in, with the next steps, there's, there's our action today in endorsing or adopting the concept endorsement, but you still have to go through contracts for each of these projects to be developed. So could you, could you verbally take us through adoption of the concept endorsement to actual construction and availability, and what kind of timeframe you might be thinking about that, and what are just the major steps in between, particular ones that we may have to have a role in?
Right, yes, so this concept endorsement is essentially a reservation of funds for each project. So after Metro staff approval, then, then the different developers will be notified, and they would proceed through, this is, for most of the projects, is our first source of funding, so then they would proceed to get the low-income housing tax credits. Most of them are financed, are proposed to be financed with those credits as well as permanent, permanent debt, so they would secure all of their additional funding. Once they have all their additional funding, then they would come back for final approval, which is a second step that Metro had identified in their process. And so it'll be a different timeline for each project, depending on the size of it and depending on those other funding sources and how successful they are, how quickly they can assemble those. So we will be bringing those back to you as they are, as they are ready. And so they'll come back for final approval right before they are ready to start construction, so right before they close on their construction loan. And so given that timeline, most projects take 12 to 18 months to construct. So we are hoping, with the case of the smaller project, for instance, the Forest Grove project, that they have proposed they could close potentially by the end of this calendar year or early in 2021. And so then that would be available in early 2022 is probably the first, first project out of these projects to be recommended. And then the other ones generally would follow that, that same timeline.
And permanent debt term of art, that's like mortgages, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so I just wanted to, before I make final comments, I just wanted to highlight that I learned of a study about the enabling language that goes beyond M W E S B, which you've done a great job with those aspirational goals. But through work that Metro did on the OCC remodel project, partnering with the National Association of Minority Contractors, they've developed contract language and instituted it through that project to ensure that BIPOC prime contractors have the equitable opportunity to compete as the contractors for that. So I hustled last week and secured that language and provided that to our C A O and county council for us to consider in terms of next steps as well, not only with housing contracts, but with other contracts, major contracts as well. So I want to step back and really acknowledge the moment here. In November of 2018, the voters of our area gave us a gift, the gift of their money to, their money to help ensure that we were more successful as a greater region in having affordable, affordable housing solutions for more members of our community. And I'm really grateful to the voters for this opportunity. Last year, we, this board, including our colleague Commissioner Trees, went through the process with you of adopting the local implementation strategy for Washington County to follow through on, on that voter-approved gift. I didn't quite understand the nature of the NOFA, but you all kept assuring me, the two of you, as well as Comey Calivar, our housing director, that this is a good, best-known practice, a good method. And so in a way, you were able to get me to envision that leap of faith and take that leap of faith. And I felt in a way, if I could use an analogy, like it was buying a bag of healthy tulip bulbs and planting those. And now here we are, and those bulbs have bloomed, and it's a beautiful bouquet. These projects that you have worked with outside agencies and partners to put together is very, very exciting. I'm just absolutely thrilled that we have this opportunity and appreciate your taking the time to share with our community the results of this bouquet and make the presentation today. So thank you for all of that work, and thank you in advance for all of the follow-through that I know you will continue to do so that we can realize the investment that our public has gifted us to, to make. So that being said, what are the wishes of the Commission for approving the concept endorsement for the seven proposed projects?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our second oral communication period. Mr. Board Clerk, what do we have?
We do not have anyone signed up, Madam Chair.
And is there anyone in the room? Seeing none, we'll move on to board announcements. So as standard, I'll announce we have a roundtable in a couple of days on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Then next Tuesday, it's work session-only day on September 8th. Following week, September 15th, we have a work session at 8:30, a board meeting at 10:00. The following week, we have another pair of meetings, but our work session is in the afternoon, starting at 2:00, and a board meeting is our once-a-month evening meeting. We will also be having a pair of meetings the last or fifth Tuesday of this month, because we have a lot of work to do. That will take place at 8:30 in the morning for our work session and a board meeting at 10:00. Also that evening, I'll be delivering the State of the County address courtesy of Zoom and YouTube at 6:00 p.m. Are there any other board announcements? Oh, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn today's meeting, September 1st of 2020?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning today's meeting, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Goodbye, everyone, stay healthy.
Now for process, I see that they brought in all the staff. Will we take a half-hour break or go get lunch and be right here and listen to them?
I would like the lunch. What would you like to do? Is a half an hour sufficient, or do we need an hour?
If I...